I'd like to welcome y'all here tonight. We're just about to get the call to meeting to order. And before we do, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then I'll bring the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for the the community we live in, for this state, for this nation. God, we just ask that that you guide each council member tonight and each presenter, Lord, as we do the work that you've called us to do. God, just guide us as we make decisions that are best for our community, and we trust you for that now in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, I'd like to again welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, and we will begin things by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson. Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Present.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest C.
Here. All right, thank you. We are at item four in on the agenda. This is the item that the council sets aside at each regular council meeting to hear comments from our residents. If we have residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you come to the microphone. Please clearly state your name and address, and we ask that you keep your comments brief and understand that the council will not take action tonight on whatever you bring forward. They'll take it under advisement. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Oh, sorry, we have one? I'm sorry, come right on up, sir.
My name is Jeff Ruth. I live on the north side of town in District Four, Ward Four. I'm just kind of.
Can you give us your address, sir?
Pardon me?
Your address?
3036 Twin County Street.
Thank you.
I'm kind of concerned on the north side of town if there's any going to be any economic growth and development along the Thompson, North Thompson corridor between Bacchus and Apple Blossom Road and what the city is taking under consideration and doing with this. Living on that side of town, there's no grocery stores or there will not be any grocery stores for us. There's one gas station in the area. We have to drive to at least Sunset where the other sides of town, northeast, south, or west, they've all got those amenities for those people in those districts to be able to go in a shorter distance to be able to get those products. I'd like to bring that to the city and have that noted, that that area of town along that Thompson corridor is really getting pretty bad and kind of shabby looking also.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I heard Harps closing, the Plaza store where I worked as a high schooler is closing.
Yes, ma'am.
And you know, that that development, of course, we don't pick where where grocery store goes.
Right.
But I hear what you're saying, and I but I bet somebody who owns grocery stores will notice that.
Well, I sure hope so, if they haven't already.
All right, thank you, but we'll sure we'll sure support that any way we can as business develops, and there is more business slated for development up that way. We probably mostly things we can't talk about, but I don't know if a grocery store is one of them or not. But thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, now, we're ready for procedural motions? I'm sorry, approval of minutes. We didn't get the minutes approved. Mike, will you make a? I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes since you were already talking. Thank you, Amelia. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, we're going to procedural motions.
I move for A and B with the exception of 13 and ask that that be read in its entirety.
Okay. Got a motion and a second with that with that change to approve A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Under item seven, appointments and reappointments, you have a resolution making a reappointment to the Public Facilities Board. Brent Handby, I don't know if Brent was able to be here tonight, but I'll go ahead and read that, a resolution making a reappointment to the Public Facilities Board of the City of Springdale.
The resolution passed.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, roll call, please.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you, and as always, we appreciate anyone willing to volunteer their time to serve on our boards and commissions, and so thank you, Brent, for your willingness to continue that service. Item eight, Springdale Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Report, and Jay Seagull is here from the Springdale Chamber. Jay?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, leaders and guests. For the fourth quarter of 2023, the year ended with the chamber facilitating two relocation industrial projects. The first is Central State's Manufacturing, which broke ground in November. It's a new steel frame manufacturing facility, bringing 140 jobs once at full capacity. They're going to be mentioned here momentarily for a state incentive resolution. Second is Premium Brands of Northwest Arkansas. Distribution Company has announced in December that they'll build their new facility, adding 100 jobs. Both of these projects will be in the Kendrick Industrial Park and contributed to a positive year end. Currently, we're assisting six other business projects in varying stages. 2023 ended with more than 1,100 new jobs created in the year. The city unemployment rate ended at 2.2% in December, which is lower than it began at the beginning of the year. The January 2024 sales tax receipts showed a 5.5% increase year over year, and the end of year receipts totaled nearly 24 million with a 3.3% increase. Construction permits for the fourth quarter totaled five commercial and 83 residential. For the year, that means that there was 58 commercial and 422 residential permits issued. The chamber has continued a series of workforce videos that highlight local businesses in our community that are designed to educate and inform high school students of local job opportunities, and upon completion of my brief, we're going to highlight a clip from one of those. Through an AEP SWEPCO partnership and grant, we just launched a two-year Marshallees Student Initiative for sixth-grade Marshallees students in the district to provide leadership and soft-skilled development. We have a couple of projects in the state incentive pipeline with Arkansas Economic Development Commission, and the chamber continues connecting with local businesses throughout 20 and 24 to support growth and expansion. For construction, Big Emma's Mixed Income Apartments are breaking ground March 7th. After lengthy renovation, La Quinta Inn and Suites on 48th Street will reopen next month. The Springdale Municipal Campus City Hall ribbon cutting is rescheduled for April 5th. Encore Building Products was acquired by Builders First Source in December with intentions to complete brand transition this summer. In April, two industrial businesses will be hosting ribbon cuttings, Powers of Arkansas and HVAC Company and Shiloh Fence and Supply. This time, please turn your attention to the videos. We're going to show an excerpt from the chamber's workforce video series highlighting Apex Central.
Apex Central, a CRH company, is an equal opportunity employer and is the leading local distributor for products such as concrete, asphalt, sand, and stone. It is also an industry leader in construction services and is paving the way for your future career. Entry-level employees typically begin as a groundsman and are trained to grow into leadership roles in the quarry or.
So this is one of the latest that we've released. We continue to work throughout the community highlighting these key businesses throughout Springdale, and that's both for our companies as well as for our high school kids. Pending your questions, that concludes my brief.
All right, item nine, I'm going to turn this over to Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. That that presentation was a good segue into this resolution, which is a resolution endorsing participation in sales and use tax refund program authorized by the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003 and Arkansas Code Annotated 15-4-2706D for Central State's Manufacturing on at 1546 Kendrick Avenue.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo. Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, as Patsy comes to the mic, we'll have we'll get ready for the Planning Commission report and recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is an ordinance that's actually correcting a Scrivener's error. We were provided incorrect legal description by the applicant, and all this does is replace the one that was in the previous ordinance with the correct one. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 5919, which rezoned certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial districts 12 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments from the council or from the audience? All right, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
And as usual, they're emergency clause because there's pending actions on these projects. The next one is the final plat for Phase Three of cottages at the park. The planning commission has reviewed this, the final plat. There are some amenity items that they will be bonding for. We're working through that amount, and we'll have that ready by the time we get final signatures. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance accepting the final plat of Phase Three of cottages at the park to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Counsel? Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson. Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next item is the final plat for Phase One of Brentwood Village. Again, the planning commission reviewed this final plat, recommends approval. I don't think there's any items that we're going to have to bond for, but we'll work all that out before the signatures are done. The title of an or the title of the ordinance reads an ordinance accepting the final plat of Phase One of the Brentwood Village to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? All right, roll call.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you, Patsy. Item 11, Ordinance Committee Chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
We have one ordinance that came before the committee with recommendation for approval. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas by creating them a new article, Article Six, micro mobility devices, shared small vehicles, and and shared small vehicle companies.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
I have a question. When we said the scooters, we're going to stay in an area.
Yeah, but that let and and we can we can sure talk about that, but this is not this is not actually that agreement. This is a change in the ordinance, and Ernest, you correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a change in the ordinance that just opens the door for us to negotiate those types of things, right? So this is not the specific agreement that that Patsy and Tristan brought up. This is all that would come back to council, and we may not, you know, we may or may not ever bring that and work it out. Right, we just need to create the ordinance. Okay.
So so in this ordinance, if this ordinance does pass, then does that allow businesses to apply for business license to do this business in the city?
I'm not sure this addresses that. Ernest is looking.
They would have to make application with the city, and I'm looking here to see if it's kind of like a, help me remember, Patsy. It has to be with a valid written agreement approved by the city, so it would come back to committee before we did one. This just puts the framework in place to allow that to happen at this point, is all it does. Confucian taxi cabs.
I have I've looked at this and 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 kind of asked around from the general public to kind of get the temperament on this, and haven't got too good of a response on scooters.
Well, again, though, those are those are particulars that we're not we're not at yet.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying, it's in the ordinance, right? And I just want to make sure that if we pass this, that businesses can't come in and just automatically get a business license to put these items in the city.
No matter, anything will have to come before the council.
Yeah, if you look at that proposed new section 26-152A, the last sentence says that they wouldn't would not be allowed to do so without a valid written agreement approved by the city, and we bring all those types of agreements to the city council for approval before we enter into those. Confucian taxi cabs.
Without this ordinance, they could come in and make application for business now. We don't have anything covered, so there wouldn't be anything stopping them. This this is a framework.
I think I think where we may have gotten over our skis a little bit was we put that the the MOU that had been discussed in the packet, and I think that probably suggested that we were taking that extra step as well, which we're not. We're just putting this ordinance in place, and then if someone was serious about actually bringing in scooters or entering into a written agreement approved by the city, then they would have to come back and do that.
The way I see this, Brian, is we're going to get these requests of, you know, we've already got some interested, and we need a framework in place so that we know how to handle them and how to get them to you all if we're going to consider them.
So this ordinance was based off of interest in coming into Springdale for this?
Yeah, I think I think we know that that possibility is coming. Every city around us is looking at them, and some have already done it. So I think it's good for us to be ready in how we're going to handle those when the time comes.
I I could make an analogy. We created a use unit for crypto mining, but we have no one that's applied for a business license for a crypto mining, but we did create the use unit in the event someone wanted to do it because we had no slot to fit it in, so to speak. This is similar, something similar.
Ernest, just just be clear, I think what Mike said is accurate, but I want to make sure. So 26 dash section 26-152 says it's unlawful for any shared small vehicle company or person or on behalf of the company to operate these vehicles within the city without a valid written agreement by the city, correct? So basically, that's what the mayor's talking about, the framework. So if we did not have this ordinance, it like we just don't do anything tonight, a company could come in and start doing that without our approval. Is that basically it?
Well, it well, A, would depend on if they had an actual physical location in the city, which our business license applications are pretty much driven by.
Well, let's say they do.
Well, let's say they didn't. I mean, right now, it's lawful to operate a bicycle pursuant to state law on city streets.
Sorry, a shared small vehicle company could come start operating without any approval, without any.
Well, we we would probably would depend on if they had a location in the city would depend on what the property was zoned, and then it would probably take a determination by the planning director as to which use unit it fits under.
I think we would oppose that, Jeff, but this gives us a better basis to oppose it. It sets some rules in place. That's the way I see it.
Because I go back to the crypto mining. We run into that from time to time. Somebody comes in and wants to is thinking about doing something, yet the the ordinances have not kept up with technology or with the times, so we have to try and keep a step ahead, and I believe that's what this is intended to do.
So with this memorandum of understanding put in here, that has nothing to do with this ordinance?
Correct, that's not being discussed tonight. I think it was put in there just as an example, I think, as to what maybe.
Describe what could be.
What could be. I think Patsy may want to talk about that.
What control does the city council have over those agreements?
Well, it's the same now as you have a taxi cab operator permits or for we you approve the police department's towing contract.
Does the city? Or the district did before?
It would be city council.
An agreement like that, y'all would have to approve.
Well, I'll take the blame for putting it in there. I just wanted you guys to know that we didn't dream this up out of nowhere. That was the second company that come in and talked to us about it. The first one, I don't think, had any experience. It just kind of puts us in a better position so we know how to deal with people that are coming in. They're going to all kinds of places all over Northwest Arkansas. We just need to be ready to know how to deal with them if they come to Springdale.
I think the suggestion is, and the discussion is, is that there may be some people that don't want it at all, and so would we be better off just not doing anything? Or does by not doing anything, does that just kind of create more problems?
Well, it kicks the can down the down the road when somebody comes in. We're going to have to make a determination what kind of business license they need to get if they don't have a physical location. We're just trying to get ahead of the game a little bit so that we know how to deal with them when they come in. We're not saying they have to come in. We're just saying if you want to do this, this is a process you have to go through, and you guys determine how you want to set the contract.
And again, I'm not I'm not taking this one side or the other, but I think some people are concerned that maybe this is encouraging it.
Well, okay. I'm just trying to have a way to deal with everybody, the people who show up and say, we want to put them in Springdale.
Yeah, and you probably noticed this doesn't have this ordinance doesn't have an emergency clause, so it's not like we're in a hurry because we've got somebody lining up to want to start one of these companies.
It just identifies a classification of business that we don't have a classification for now.
We had a crypto mining company coming in wanting to do something. We had to put we didn't have any way to deal with that because there's not a use unit for the ordinance was written a long time ago when a lot of these things didn't exist, and so we have to make interpretations. Sometimes we just need some guidance on how we deal with some of those things.
I think the confusion for me lies in the last week when it was presented, it was spin was coming, and this was happening, and this is what we were voting on. I get now tonight that it's not, and I totally agree with the fact that we got to have framework, but after last week's committee meeting, it was to me presented that that's what's coming before you, that's what you're going to vote on, and.
Well, that will come back sometime in the future.
And that's great. That's great, but I think the confusion lies tonight, that that was presented last week, like you're voting on that.
I just wanted you to know, we had a company that was really interested. That's why we're trying to get, you know, I've been hulling them off for a year.
It's all Patsy's fault.
How many times is it not my fault? Okay, I'll take the blame for this one, too.
Well, everybody, I think everybody's clear now, and apologize for the confusion, but we've got a motion and a second. So are there other questions or concerns? Is anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call, please.
Taldo.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you. That was that was that almost sounded like it hurt. All right, thank you, Mike, and next one, item 12. I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution setting a hearing date on a petition to vacate an alley between Block 12 and Block 13 of the original town of Springdale, Arkansas plat. This is in connection with the First Security Bank building project. This was set the public hearing as required by statute for March 12th. Happy to answer any questions?
This is the one right behind First Security?
It's the one that runs north and south behind where Conquesos was. It was originally platted, oh, gosh. I think it was 1946, I believe. The statute requires before an alley can be vacated that, talk about not keeping up with the times, that notice has to be published once a week for two consecutive weeks in the newspaper, and then we have to have a public hearing, and this resolution sets that in motion, and it will come back on March 12th.
Do you have a motion yet? Okay, I motion, I move to approve the resolution.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Taldo. Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Good. All right, we're at item 13 that that we want to be sure that is in accordance with Mike's motion at the beginning of the agenda. We want to read this resolution in full, and I'm going to give Ernest the honor of reading this.
I I do appreciate it is an honor to read this, and I hope everything in here is correct, but it is an honor for me to read this. This is a resolution recognizing the service of Chief Truman Brewer by naming and designating a newly constructed public street to be known as Chief Truman Brewer Street. Whereas the City of Springdale has undertaken the construction of a new public street in Springdale, said project being known as Project Number 18BPS14 Dixieland Apple Blossom to Wagon Wheel. Said street running north from Wagon Wheel Road to Apple Blossom Avenue, the street. Whereas it is the desire of the city council, the City of Springdale, Arkansas, to honor the life and service of Chief Truman Brewer, who began his service to the City of Springdale, Arkansas in 1968, twice served as Springdale Chief of Police from 1981 to 1989, and again from 1997 to 1998. 1998. Thereafter, he was the investigator in the Springdale City Attorney's Office from 2004 to 2010. Chief Brewer passed away on June 25th, 2021. And whereas the city council for the city of Springdale, Arkansas wishes to express its appreciation for Chief Truman Brewer's many years of dedicated service to the city of Springdale and its residents by naming the street Chief Truman Brewer Street. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council for the city of Springdale, Arkansas, that the newly constructed public street, Project Number 18 BPS 14, running north from Wagon Wheel Road to Apple Blossom Avenue, is hereby named and designated as Chief Truman Brewer Street in recognition of Chief Brewer's many years of dedicated service to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, passed and approved this 13th day of February, 2024.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comment or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson?
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, and, uh, thank you to the family for being here. Thank you for allowing us this privilege to be able to do this. And I don't want, I'm not asking you to speak, but I sure want to give anyone that opportunity if you'd like to. You're going to pass? Okay. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Cowards.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, item 14, uh, discussion on setting a date for the second city council committee meeting of February 2024. As y'all will know, I think next Monday, which would normally be our day, is President's Day. Uh, it's, we've traditionally booted that to a Tuesday or a Wednesday. We could do Tuesday next week because, uh, the planning commission is, it's their work session week.
So moved.
Yeah. So moved to move it to next Tuesday, a week from tonight, and a second, uh, season, okay? Good deal. All right, any further discussion? If not, uh, roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taldo?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Kerry's seven one.
All right. Well, okay, let's think about what we want to talk about. Jeff's not here. Um, yeah, um, let's, uh, uh, let's see, is, are there any comments from council tonight?
I have one. Um, who owns the alley beside the First Security Annex?
Between the First Security Annex and...
And Odd Soul and all that.
And Odd Soul, those buildings?
Is it, is that a public street?
There, there, there is an alley.
It's a public alleyway.
There is an alley that runs east and west, and that will be addressed as well in this project. It's actually going to be widened. We'll bring that back the same night as we're vacating the other alley, but that one doesn't require, since it's an existing alley and you're, the statute gives the council the authority to widen it, we don't have to go through the same process we do with the other alley, if that makes any sense. But you'll hear both of them the same night on March 12th.
There's a telephone pole laying there now in that alley right next to the annex, so we probably need to get that looked at, and I didn't know if it was private or public.
Is it blocking it, Randall?
No, it's just right there by where you step up on the curb. It's just right there.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll look at it and make sure they're doing what they need to do with it and during construction. Anybody else? Any department heads? I'm going to go ahead and ask y'all if you have anything. Go back to our department head meeting this morning. Uh, uh, city attorney, you got anything, sir?
I, I just want to mention, we've got a new feature here. When you press your talk button, your name comes up on the screen. I've been watching that all night.
Where's the automatic vote button?
I think this is maybe leading up to it. Am I right, Mark? They're testing some things out and...
It's just been eight years in the works.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll get there.
Oh, you're going to know how to vote.
That's government work.
I'll, I'll just see what Watson's doing.
All right, I don't have anything. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We got a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thank you to everybody tonight.